Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your patience. Welcome to the March 12, 2025 East Lansing Planning Commission Meeting. Ms. Reiten, would you please take role?
Commissioner Chapin.
President.
Commissioner DeNault.
Commissioner Overby.
Here.
Commissioner Putz.
Commissioner Wagner.
He's here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
He's here, okay. Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner, or sorry, Vice Chair Wagner. Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Hendricks, oh, I'm sorry, that's Chair Sullivan. Commissioner Lupeev. And Commissioner Soloweski.
Thank you. So, next on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. Before doing so, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to move item 7.1, Consideration of Proposed Ordinance 1545, to right before item 6.1, so moving it right there on the agenda. Any concerns with doing so? Let me know.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda with that revision? Moved by Commissioner Chapin, seconded by Commissioner Overby. Seeing no discussion, Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That takes us onto item 1.3, Approval of the Minutes from the February 26, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there a motion?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your patience. Welcome to the March 12, 2025 East Lansing Planning Commission Meeting. Ms. Reiten, would you please take role?
Commissioner Chapin.
President.
Commissioner DeNault. Commissioner Overby.
Here.
Commissioner Putz. Commissioner Wagner.
He's here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
He's here, okay. Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner, or sorry, Vice Chair Wagner. Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Hendricks, oh, I'm sorry, that's Chair Sullivan. Commissioner Lapine. And Commissioner Solowski.
Thank you. So, next on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. Before doing so, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to move Item 7.1, Consideration of Proposed Ordinance 1545, to right before Item 6.1, so moving it right there on the agenda. Any concerns with doing so? Let me know.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda with that revision?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Chapin, seconded by Commissioner Overby. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That takes us onto Item 1.3, Approval of the Minutes from the February 26, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Overby.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Chapin. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That takes us onto Item Number Two, Committee Reports. So, there's four items in the agenda here. I don't know if city staff would like to tackle these first, and then we can weigh in on each agenda item as they're brought up. First up is the Age Friendly Communities Committee.
Thank you. Our, this committee is a committee of the seniors' commission, and it's, it's charged us to consider the 2020 age-friendly work plan and determine whether or not to update it. And that committee has been meeting monthly for the last almost two years to do so. Our next meeting is coming up on, next week, on the 20th, in the morning, which is the same day that I'll be presenting to the ARP National Conference about East Lansing's age-friendly activities. So, we expect probably the April meeting to be our, our last sort of meeting to look at, at the work plan and determine what changes we're going to make, and then we'll start making those changes and send recommendations off to council, I would guess, by the end of June, so. Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
I think CD Advisory Committee is, has essentially wrapped up their, their work. Comprehensive Plan Update Coordinating Committee, we received, we've been working with the consulting team to incorporate some changes that staff had sent in our initial review draft. We expect to send that amended draft off to the Coordinating Committee, hopefully as soon as the end of this week. If not, I expect it will be very early in next week. And also, our, our hope is that we'll also be having that to the commission, hopefully within the month of, potentially within March, most likely within the month of April, which, right after which we can send it out to the City Council to open up for distribution to neighboring communities, stakeholders, public, for about six weeks. And after that time, we bring it back for approval. So we expect that to be before this body fairly soon for referring, referring off to the council, and then again before you, likely in late June or early July, for approval. And finally, our Green Code Study Committee.
I think your volume is on and it's picking up the, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
It was like a feedback.
Okay, there's feedback. Finally, the Green Code Study Committee had originally intended to meet yesterday. There's, we've been working closely with engineering staff, another staff at DPW, to sort of craft the recommendations language that we've been hearing coming out of that committee's work. So they'll be meeting next Wednesday, the 19th, to sort of make some final determinations on recommendations to, forward to council, which we expect will be to council probably in April as well. So, a lot of committees doing a lot of good work.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Any commissioner questions or comments on those? Seeing none, that takes us onto Item Number Three, Staff Reports.
Yeah.
I'll keep it with you, Mr. Bartley.
You can keep it with me. So, really, all I have to report on is Senior Planner Alicia Reiten and Caleb Shero, our parking administrator, presented last night to the council, the downtown parking report, a draft. We expect council to approve that in their consent agenda next week. The, the highlights are that we have parking available. There is about just under 3,100 parking spaces within the downtown parking system, 85% of which are within garages, and the balance, about 9% within surface parking lots and about 5, I guess my math might be a little bit off, but 5% or 6% within on-street parking. And our average peak use is about 65%. That takes away outlier, outlier events like home game Saturdays, for example, which we expect, generally expect the system to be full on those kind of days. But again, generally, our peak usage is around 65%, a little bit higher in the spring, generally, and a little bit lower in the fall. And then our average daily usage is just about 50% of the whole system. So, it was a great, great reminder of what our system is, how it's, how it's comprised of different types of parking and how much we use it. So we have enough parking right now. We just have a question of, is it in the right spot? And how do we address that? So, that's really it for me for our staff report.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Any questions? All right, seeing none, that takes us onto Item Number Four, Commissioner Announcements. Are there any announcements from commissioners? And as part of this agenda item, there is also the disclosure of the conflicts of interest. If there's anything anyone would like to disclose?
No.
All right. Seeing none, moving on to Item Number Five, Communications from Citizens. First up is Item 5.1, Written Communications. I did see some in the agenda packet for Item 7.1. I didn't see anything submitted in the agenda outside of that. However, correct me if I'm wrong?
No, that's correct. There was one, one laid out, and that's been printed for you from, from the folks who wrote it.
And that's also in the same agenda item, right?
Correct.
It is. Okay, that takes us onto Item 5.2, Verbal from the Audience. So this is your time to come before us to address anything that's on or off the agenda. However, if you are here to discuss a, a public hearing, we suggest that you do so during that public hearing on that particular agenda item. Also, please keep your comments to five minutes and identify yourself on the card that's up there, if possible. So, at this point, does anybody wish to come forward to address the commission? Okay, seeing none. We still have public hearings later on the agenda, so there's opportunities there as well. Is there anyone online in the queue?
No one on the line.
Great, thank you. That concludes that agenda item. So up next on our revised agenda is Item 7.1, which is Consideration of Proposed Ordinance 1545, An Amendment to the Definition of Family and Chapter 50 Zoning of the City's Code of Ordinances. Mr. Bartley?
Thank you. So, in, in February, you, you saw this item first. The request is to change the definition of family within the zoning ordinance by adding just a few words essentially to, to include, include within the definition of family cousins, foster children, persons living with dwelling unit owner under guardianship. I had mentioned nieces and nephews, those had already been added. We did have some discussion about cousin. My suggestion would just be to, if you're inclined to recommend approval to the council, that you may recommend also, I guess, narrowly defining cousin within the definition or, or elsewhere, just to, to say, you know, the, the child of my parent's sibling, or some, something to that effect, to make sure that we're defining cousin as sort of the technical, correct definition and not potential vernacular definitions that could include more people. We have received correspondence about this request, generally in, in favor of this, of the proposed change. The same gentleman submitted another letter tonight, also expressing his support of this, this change. I also asked, there were some questions and discussion at the last meeting that I didn't feel prepared to answer, and so I've asked Councilmember Meadows to be here tonight. He proposed the amendment, and also our city attorney who prepared it. So they're both available for questions to, if needed.
Great, thank you. Briefly, just wanted to note for the minutes that Commissioner Lapine arrived at 7:20. Okay, at this point, we can open it up for questions from the commission. Is there any questions for Landon or city staff, or the city attorney, or Councilman Meadows?
I'll lead off with a, a quick question. Just, Councilman Meadows, I'm hoping to get a, just a better understanding of, of sort of the, the history and intent on this briefly, if you wouldn't mind chiming in.
It seemed clear from the, the passage of Proposal One that we needed to make a change to this particular provision. I think there, there will be another amendment to the zoning code that will come forward a little bit later that, that I think is being worked on. But, in this particular case, if you take a look at the first paragraph of the Proposal One, you know, shall not restrict in any way relationships of persons living. And so this, the family definition was more restrictive than that, and the suggestion had been made by, by one of the people who, who had proposed, Proposal One, to add these specific changes that you're, that you're looking at right now, to include cousins. And while I recognize that it'd be nice to, to limit that, and I think at one point I even mentioned that if you go on ancestry.com, you're probably going to find that you have like 10,000 cousins. So, it may be a good idea to take a look at that, but under the particular language of Proposal One, I'm not sure that we can restrict it in that, that manner. And Tony may have more that he could talk about on this.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's exactly right, is that the concern that the specific language of 2.3, the city shall not in any way restrict, and shall not restrict in any way relationships of persons living together as a household or residing in the home, there could clearly, it creates inconsistency with the definition of family as is, which excludes those provisions that we're proposing to add in, and so we want to ensure this clarity and we don't, you know, result in incongruity that could result in legal challenges.
Some of the, some of the questions and discussion that came up at the last commission hearing was regarding the term cousin, of course, and how kind of subjective that term can be, and how broadly that would be applied here, and then also, things like great-grandparents, I think, wouldn't be included in this definition of, of family here as it's written. So I think the, the concern I had and some of the others had at the last meeting was, was kind of broadening this out in a way could potentially have the opposite effect of limiting it to those not included in the broadened definition here. Could you comment on those concerns in particular?
Yeah, I mean, I think that certainly, if that's a concern of the commission, certainly is noteworthy and should be brought back to the council for consideration. When we were dealing with the ordinance, that as it's written in the definition, it, it does enumerate, right? And so, if we tried to create a more inclusive definition that didn't specifically enumerate, I have potentially greater concerns about that and how that could be construed as, as far as potentially being ambiguous when you're looking at each fact, you know, fact-specific application. But if there are certain individuals that aren't enumerated that the group thinks should be, I think that should be noted in your report as well.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a kind of a combination of, of those things not being enumerated and also kind of a lack of a definition of something. So, having not written an ordinance in the past, structurally, would it make sense to define some of those terms, such as cousin? I think that's kind of where I'm leading, that that should either be removed or better defined because it can be incredibly broad with just the term cousin.
We could certainly, we could certainly look at that, yeah. I certainly have concerns about how cousin would be construed as well.
Okay. Sorry, I've hogged the mic enough. Is there questions from Commissioner Overby?
Well, just to further, further delve into this issue, I, I'm assuming, at least from the comments that we've heard, that the issue is that there are people that you consider a cousin that, that are really not cousin, according to cousin by blood. I think that's what, that's, that's as, as I heard it. And so, what do we do to limit it then, to, to cousins by blood? I think that's, that, is, is that the concern? And...
If I can, if I can interject on that, you know, there, the, the family definition has a number of sections within it, and one of those sections provides specifically that the individual who is claiming that an individual is a relative of some kind has the burden of proof by clear and convincing evidence. So, even the broad statement of cousin would require you to demonstrate that this person is actually related to you.
Oh, all right.
In that manner. So, I think that, you know, that takes care of the issue that you've raised anyway. And in terms of the sort of general word, grandfather and grandmother, that does not necessarily exclude a great-grandfather or a great-great-grandfather or any of the items that, that you had indicated. I think that the language itself is sufficient, especially with Section 2 of the family definition, which requires this proof by clear and convincing evidence. So, you know, if you, if you, we all have people that we consider close enough to us and our family that, you know, maybe we've considered them to be cousins of some kind. But this requires a blood relationship or a relationship that's built upon the adoption of an individual.
Right, right.
And I think that probably the language is sufficient.
That addresses my concern. Thank you, Mark.
So, we're still in question mode. I was going to say some of this when we have a motion on the table, but to our attorney here, I think we've addressed this, does the proposed language tonight conflict or coincide with Proposal One? I believe it coincides. It doesn't conflict, the language that we have in front of us to include niece, nephew, cousin, et cetera. Doesn't, it doesn't conflict with what we voted on back in November, correct?
That is correct, and that was the intent.
Yeah. Nor does it, we have, the city shall use state law, this doesn't conflict with state law, correct?
It does not.
Okay.
That is correct.
That's all I, that's all I expected. Just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion? Landon, you know what page the motion's on here?
Yeah, I couldn't find it.
I couldn't find it either.
Yeah, I thought there was a public, aren't we going to have a hearing?
We, this is, we already had a public hearing on this at the last.
Yeah. I thought, yeah, it's like different.
If you want to speak on it, you can, you can speak on it, but there was, there was previously a public hearing, so.
Yes.
At the, at the last Planning Commission meeting. Okay. Yeah. And on public hearing agenda items, we can come up and speak. I do have a card from Patrick Rose. Mark? Yeah.
Sorry, I, I thought there was going to be a public hearing. I thought that was what I said, and that's why I didn't speak at public comment.
All good.
I find myself just baffled by listening to this discussion, okay? I should say, I'm Mark Grebner. I happen to be an attorney. I've been a resident of the city for, I don't know, 54 years or so. I think 54. I'm county commissioner and I'm a bunch of other things. And it happens that I've practiced more as a defense attorney for housing cases in the city, maybe than anybody else. At least I did a whole lot of them, about 30-some cases. This is about the definition of the word family. And first, let's just say, you have the power, the city has the power to define the word family as it's used for, say, admission to the Hannah Center on a family pass, or for the definition of nepotism in hiring. You can define family for that purpose. But you cannot define family for the purpose of zoning. You do not have that legal power. Okay, let me just be clear about this. The United States Supreme Court in Moore versus East Cleveland, I'm talking about the United States Constitution, the United States Supreme Court and its holding in 1977, could not have made it clearer that the city, that the city and similar municipalities cannot define family for the purpose of exercising its zoning powers. In Boris versus Long Island, or wherever it is, the decision was made in 74 that zoning powers did extend so far as to say that you could restrict, that you could restrict residency to families. But then in, three years later, the Supreme Court clearly said, you cannot define families, that's a definitional question for the courts. And I'm reading from the holding here. This is the United States Supreme Court under the Constitution of the United States. This should not be controversial. "Ours is by no means a limited, a tradition limited to respect for the bonds uniting the members of the family, of the nuclear family. The tradition of uncles, aunts, cousins, and especially grandparents sharing a common, sharing a household, along with parents and children, has roots equally venerable and equally deserving of constitutional recognition." I don't think this is controversial. Other municipalities don't attempt to define family, but from the time that the definition of family was imported into the zoning code, it was unlawful. One reason that, that Charter Amendment, Proposal One didn't attempt to change that was that it was already unconstitutional, you don't have the power to define family. Okay. So, that's under the United States Constitution, but then it gets a little worse, which is that in Michigan, the United, the Michigan Supreme Court held in Delta Township versus Denalfo, that even the limitation, the, the United States Supreme Court basically said blood or marriage is, a person can be a family, a, a family can exist in any, if, if there are connections of blood or marriage. You have to look at the details of how people live, but a family cannot be defined to include or not include cousins or grandparents or whatever, as long as there's relation of blood or marriage. But in Michigan, under the Michigan Constitution, the Michigan Supreme Court said, and now, I'll just, I'll just quote this briefly, this, this shouldn't be controversial. This is so, this is like black letter law, really. We, we view Moore not as a limitation of Beltar, this is Moore versus East Cleveland, we, not as a limitation, but instead as dealing with the other side of Belt, the Beltar coin that where the state can restrict occupancy, that while the state can restrict residential occupancy to the family, it cannot dissect the family. And they go on to say that a family is not limited in Michigan, under the Michigan Supreme Court, even to ties of blood or marriage, that it has to be, it has to be considered in the light of the way that people live together. That's not within the power of the city to write that definition. It will be decided at each point in the context of, of the case. Now, in all the cases I've practiced, it has never come up that the city tried to enforce its definition of family, and I believe that's because everyone knew that it was infirm legally. I don't understand why you would define it this way. It's better to loosen it, but it'd be better not to be unconstitutional in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Patrick Rose?
Thank you, Patrick Rose, 310 Oxford Road. I've given you my prepared remarks for this week and from last week. I want to depart from them to answer what I heard from Councilmember Meadows and City Attorney Chubb, and I have to admit, I'm even more baffled today, hearing what was said. It was said that it seemed clear from Proposal One, we needed to make this change. And then they proceeded to say, one clause of Proposal One, in Sentence One, says, "The city may not restrict in any way relationships of persons living together as a household or residing in the home, or interfere with the rights of owners to live with persons of their choice." They didn't tell you that the sentence then says, "As long as such persons are not rent-paying tenants." So, the reason that it couldn't have seemed clear to them that Proposal One required the change is because there's nothing in Sentence One that would require the change. There's nothing in Sentence One that changes the way the definition of family operates. It operates as an exception to the duty to obtain a rental license. That's where it's listed, and when Ordinance 1538 was submitted in September, drafted by the city attorney, he took the definition and put it where it should have always been, not in the zoning code. Because as you just heard, the zoning code does not permit you to define who can live in the home, other than the ways that you already do it, limiting per square foot occupancy, making sure that it, if it's in a neighborhood requiring single-family dwellings, that they operate as a household, not that you define who is the occupants of that household, that you limit who can live in which bedrooms, no, no one living in basements, but it's not a proper subject for the zoning code. And it wasn't going to be put in the zoning code. The next thing I heard, which was utterly baffling, is that somehow, in answer to Mr. Chapin's question, that it doesn't conflict with their own interpretation of Proposal One. If they actually thought that the family definition is inconsistent with our proposal, they wouldn't be making minutia, tiny little changes with just adding cousin, foster child, or ward of a guardian, because it doesn't come close to answering the imagined problem that they see. So they can't be serious that they're fixing a problem that doesn't exist because the fix they've offered you doesn't fix the problem they didn't fix it. It's not a problem, they don't need to fix it. But if they did need to fix it, this wouldn't be the way. Third, it's just not true as a matter of record. I never suggested that this was necessary as a part of the amendment. Councilmember Meadows has that from city council hearings, from my letters to council. He heard me say it to the commission, and it was obvious that they were trying to defeat Proposal One by offering this change to expand the exceptions to the rental license, to make the extremely restrictive rental license scheme less onerous to defeat the amendment. It was a completely separate issue from whether it was needed to comply. Lastly, it's absolutely clear from the colloquy that Councilmember Meadows and I had, that he called an audible. The city attorney drafted Ordinance 1538 to amend the rental code, put the family definition in the rental code, and he did so without sending it to planning, as he had done so before. In the middle of council, Councilmember Meadows called an audible, said, "Let's break out and send 1545 as a zoning code change because it's required by the amendment," and Patrick Rose said it did. Neither assertion's true, the amendment doesn't require it, I never said it did, no reasonable argument said it did, and if it does, this doesn't solve it. So let's not accept that. Let's get to the root cause issue that you just heard about. And that is why the city, after all of these years, has not fixed what it knew to be an unconstitutional definition of family 18 years ago. When Landon Bartley told you nieces and nephews were not included, that was untrue, and he's corrected that, but the history really matters here. My nephew lived in my East Lansing home in the early aughts. I was about to receive $14,000 in sanctions, fines, daily fines, because the inspector was taking pictures of my nephew every day. I was told by the inspector that there was no exception for nephew. The city council, city manager, Annette Irwin, and the city attorney all heard from me and my lawyer. When we drafted our complaint and said we would sue, that it violated the state and federal constitution, they hurried and in very short order amended the amendment. They added niece and nephew. Why didn't they add cousins? Why haven't they expanded domestic unit the way Ann Arbor and Mount Pleasant were forced to in their reported appellate opinions? Your city attorney... Your city attorney should be telling you about that, and you are not getting good advice as to how to make a constitutional change to the domestic unit definition. I urge you to ask them to put this in the rental code, but definitely add cousin, foster child, and ward, because it's essential to families. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on this agenda item? Seeing none. Questions from commissioners?
If I could just respond. Typically, obviously, we don't directly respond to public comment, but it's important to understand, first of all, the two individuals that spoke support this change. Second of all, the cases that were referenced are cases that used the definition of "family" to be exclusionary, where the communities were trying to exclude the individuals from living together by limiting the definition of "family." The amendment that we are making here expands it. And finally, the ordinance has not been challenged in its eighteen years. We believe it's wholly constitutional. And as the second speaker noted, this is really more about posturing for, these comments were more about posturing for litigation rather than what's actually before you. So I think your conversation prior to the public comment was all on point. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Understood. Thank you. Yeah, I feel a bit like walked in on a family member watching a movie, and I missed the first half, and I'm trying to catch up, so.
I don't know if this is the time for this or not, frankly, but it would be helpful to me. I don't have any context on what was mentioned on the similar issues in Mount Pleasant and Ann Arbor. And if you are aware of something that is related to this, I do think it would be interesting, not interesting, but helpful to me as a commissioner, to hear about that, given that those are two communities that also have large college populations with high-density areas of rentals. So if there's anything you can provide on what they reference on the Mount Pleasant and Ann Arbor pieces, that would be helpful to me. But I also don't know if now is the right time for that.
I could do it for in writing for a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
If you found it necessary, absolutely.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, I just had one more comment, or question for the city attorney. When was this definition for a family implemented in Ordinance fifteen forty-five? How long has this been in the zoning code?
Do you have that, Landon? I just had it pulled up, but I think it has been eighteen years.
Has it been challenged at any?
Not to my knowledge. And additionally, there were some statements, you know, beyond this portion of the definition of "family," there's the overall reference to a domestic unit, which is a catch-all that is even more inclusive than the very specific and enumerated sections of if you and I are mother, daughter, we're family. There's the domestic unit, which says that any group can come to the city and explain why they constitute a family. If they don't meet those specific obligations, they can still be determined by the administration to be a family. If they show that they meet the basic, you know, tenets of a family by sharing the familial responsibilities, the financial responsibilities, they live together, things of that nature, and so it is extremely inclusive, and that's another reason it likely never has been challenged is because of that catch-all as an alternative to the enumerated definitions.
Okay. Yeah, I did see that, the domestic unit in which they reference "family" in the ordinance. Is there any other questions for city staff, or is there a motion, so we can discuss this?
I'll make a motion. Let's see if I can do this effectively. So I move that we amend Ordinance fifteen forty-five in the area of "family," which is a subset of domestic unit, I believe. And as amended, "family" means one person or two related persons or two unrelated persons residing in a dwelling unit, or where there are more than two persons residing in a dwelling unit. Persons classified constituting a family shall be limited to husband, wife, son, daughter, father, mother, brother, sister, grandfather, grandmother, grandson, granddaughter, aunt, uncle, and amended to include niece, nephew, cousin, stepchildren, foster children, persons living with dwelling unit owner under guardianship, and legally adopted children, or any combination of the above persons living together in a single dwelling unit. Does that work for you, Landon? Okay?
Moved by Commissioner Chapin, seconded by Commissioner Overby. Discussion? I don't want to go first, so.
I'm ready, if you want. I had a couple of questions. Alicia, you'll note that tonight I made hard copies, because this was a complicated issue. And I wanted to get my notes, I got my little tags, my yellow highlights, went back to college, it seems. So, trying to figure this out and sort it out as well as I could, given the information that we have in front of us. So, a couple of things. First of all, I note that there was a, I noted the email or the memo from the Housing Commission, and in their memo, they indicated it was a burden of proof issue. They thought the burden of proof should be on the city. I disagree with that, but I believe that's not an issue for tonight. That would be a separate issue. That's a policy change, and I would just expound on that a little bit to say that I think if push comes to shove, for lack of a better term, I want the onus in the court of the family versus the city staff determining what is and what isn't. And I think, I'm going to add this too, especially in this context that we're in right now, to have the city staff determine you are or you aren't puts us in a really awkward position. I believe that belongs in the court of the family. So if that comes my way again, Landon, you know, I'm going to vote on that. All right? Okay. So I want to address that. Number one, I'm comfortable with the use of the term cousin. Maybe we change that a little bit as we move on. As I said in our last meeting, I believe in an inclusive look to this problem as opposed to an exclusive perspective, and cousin might be subject to interpretation, but so be it. So those are some thoughts there. One, two, three, and there was a fourth item here. I think we addressed that. Thank you, Tony, for your help on that question. And yes, I addressed that from the commission. So that's what I wanted to say. I'm comfortable with this vote. It's been a long time. I think we need to move this forward. Maybe we take a little time to talk about the word cousin, but I'm good to go.
Thank you for your comments. There's a lot of really good points you made, so appreciate that. Stole my thunder. Good points.
Yes, mine, too.
Commissioner Overby?
Well, I want to echo a couple of things that you said. I'm comfortable with not defining cousin in a way that's infinite and exquisite. I think there's a common definition of it, and that it means by blood and/or other legal means, and I think I'm comfortable with that. And I also want to point out that I agree that the burden of proof should be on the family. It's, in my view, it's intrusive for the city to make those assumptions, and they would have to go to the family to make those decisions, and having the family make those decisions and recommendations, I think, is the right way to go.
Good comments. Thank you. Any other comments on this? I'll just say a few brief things. You know, I'm aware this isn't in a bubble, and it's a larger overall issue, but that's not what's before us. It's a pretty narrow-focus thing, and, you know, on the advice of the city attorney, I'm viewing this as it's a clarification of a definition, you know? Is there a legal issue potentially down the line? I'm not qualified to answer that. I had concerns about the term cousin because of legal ambiguity, and I think the city attorney would be the one that would be expressing that as a concern if there's legal ambiguity there, and it doesn't seem like it's a concern there. You know, I don't know. To me, it's always seemed like a bit like a solution in search of a problem, but I'm trying to view this in the narrowest sense of modifying a definition, and to me, what's on this page makes a lot more sense than what we had before, and it's been in place since, what, the nineties? So I'm inclined to support it with the purpose of moving this on to discussion to council, for them to deliberate this further and take in more public feedback if necessary. So that's where I'm at. So if there's no other comments, I'm ready for a vote on this. Can we do a roll call? Just?
We have a motion made by Chapin. I'm sorry, I didn't catch you the second one.
Chapin, Overby.
Yes, I seconded.
Seconded by Overby to approve the amendment to the definition of "family," Ordinance fifteen forty-five, as proposed. Commissioner Chapin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Overby?
Yes.
Commissioner Putz?
Yes.
Sheriff Sullivan?
Yes.
You guys have it.
Thank you. That concludes this agenda item. This item is now on to council at a date to be determined. And thank you for answering our questions on this tonight. Appreciate the input. All right, that takes us on to tonight's public hearings. First up is Item six point one, a request from Hassan Baydoun of Decorah Inc. on behalf of Pizza Wallas for approval of a special use permit located at five twenty-three East Grand River Avenue. The applicant request is to allow alcohol service. The property is owned B3 City Center Commercial. Grace, take it away.
I'm Grace Lee, the Associate Planner. So this is a request for five twenty-three East Grand River. This used to be, previously was the MSU FCU office next to the Peanut Barrel. There are three other businesses currently located in this same building, so the building is five twenty-one to five twenty-nine East Grand River, and so the other current occupants are the Peanut Barrel, Kimchi Box, and Sushi Y. This suite is currently vacant and has been vacant since MSU FCU relocated their offices in 2023. So the request here is for onsite alcohol service and consumption in conjunction with the proposed restaurant use. So currently, the restaurant use is in the permitting process with our building department. The restaurant itself, without the alcohol use, is permitted by right, so they are in the process of obtaining permits for the work on that space. The proposed total occupancy is two hundred and sixty persons. I will note, in the staff report, I said there was not a seating plan submitted at this time. I did receive that earlier this week. There was a miscommunication about receiving that, and the current seating plan shows a total of one hundred and twenty-eight seats in the restaurant. There is also, the only change to the building proposed is the addition of an exterior patio area in the front, which is proposed to have thirty-two seats and operate on a seasonal basis, kind of similar to the Peanut Barrel next door. That's proposed to be on private property, not in the public right of way. And the proposed hours of operation for the business are eleven AM to two AM, Monday through Sunday. I think that's really all of the major things, unless you guys have any questions. This will go to the DDA at their March meeting, which is March twenty-seventh, for them to review as well. And I also did, I included a motion in your packet. I know the bylaws have been revised. You're by no means required to vote on this at this meeting, but I wanted you to feel empowered to do so if you desire to, so.
Thank you. That's a helpful overview. Any questions? Commissioner Lapine?
Grace, I just have a quick question. I know that this is just a request for the alcohol sales and not a site plan, but I'm trying to think of other instances in the city where we have, like, two outdoor patios that are right next to each other that would be serving alcohol?
So we do have, like, at Barrio and the Jolly Pumpkin and Mash, right there along Albert, there's a couple, right in that row of suites.
Fieldhouse and Hop Cat?
Yes, they do as well, yeah. Although there's a little more space between their patio areas, but yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking of, I was thinking of those, because they seem to have more space between the patios. This, to me, based on the photos and having frequented the Peanut Barrel quite a bit, would be very close together for two patios serving alcohol. Are there any additional requirements for that?
So at least through the Liquor Control Commission, they have to be, there has to be a barrier, so there has to be a solid barrier around the patio that would prevent people from leaving with their alcoholic beverages. So that would be in place. There wouldn't be a way to go from this patio to the other without physically leaving the restaurant. You couldn't leave with your beverage, no.
That helps me. Thank you.
Commissioner Lapine, to sort of address your question, I don't know if you saw this, but under the special use permit, there is a requirement that says, "The establishment shall not cause or continue undue concentration of similar uses in the neighborhood such that liquor establishments and trade become a dominant influence or feature of the district or neighborhood," and that is not approved in the criteria. And it says, "The previous tenant was a banking institution, not a restaurant. The other tenants of Grand River, such as the Peanut Barrel, have a liquor license." So that was one of the, okay, I assume you saw that.
Yep. I'm just thinking we would have three businesses essentially right next to each other that all serve alcohol.
Yeah, right. Yes, I have the same concern.
The only other business in that block with an alcohol license is the Peanut Barrel, with an active alcohol license.
And then you can buy alcohol at the Campbell's Fish or the Campbell's Market.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. But that's all for off-site consumption. Yes, I understand.
I don't think it's listed here, maybe I missed it, but the patio would have, I think there's an ordinance that requires outdoor patios to be closed by ten, right? Is that the?
I am not, it's usually twelve.
Is it twelve? Okay.
That's a good question.
Understood. And then there's, what?
I think that's just been past policy. I don't know that we have a specific ordinance for that.
I thought it was an ordinance, so. And then the patio holds thirty-two, right?
Correct.
So maybe this is a better question for applicant, but it's kind of inset a little bit, the building is, and I see that there's a bike rack and a tree there. I'm trying to visualize, and I know some pictures were added, but it's tough to tell, like, how far that patio goes out into the sidewalk, and I'm aware some of that sidewalk is the tenant's, or potential tenant's property.
Yeah, I think they might be able to answer that a little better.
Okay, I'll ask that question. Thank you. Any other questions for city staff before we bring the applicant up? Commissioner Lapine?
Do we have patios where you can drink outside until two AM in downtown East Lansing?
I don't think that we currently have any. You can limit the hours.
But what is being proposed before us is?
Yeah, yeah, that's what they've applied for and asked for, but you can certainly limit that if you would like to.
Yeah, I don't remember the graduates' hours, that's not, yeah.
Right, they don't have a patio on Grand River?
Do, just very high up.
Yeah.
Okay, I think at this point we're ready for the applicant to come up. I have three cards here. I don't know if you'd like to come up at the same time or individually, but Hassan Baydoun, Sugara Roy, and Carson Patton. I don't know which is, which one of these is an applicant and which is a resident, but...
I'm Hassan Baydoun. I'm the applicant on behalf of Sugara.
I'm the owner.
Okay, thank you. Is there some background you'd like to give and an explanation of the business?
Yeah, I can probably start. So, I mean, I am resident of O K M S. As a profession, by profession, I'm an actuary. I worked for an insurance company out in New York. I started, so what brought me to this area was my job at Jackson National Life. So we were actually going to, you know, Canton for Ikea visits and stuff like that, and there we found out the Pizza Wallas, and my wife, my daughters, we were very fond of that pizza, and we frequented that place, and we were thinking, why don't we bring that here instead of, you know, traveling one hour over there? So that basically started our conversation with the franchisee, and initially, we were thinking about placing a quick-service restaurant, but then the discussion happened, and we found... but then the discussion happened and we found like adding, adding a full sit-in restaurant with a pizza concept will add to the, you know, the food scene of East Lansing. It will, I mean, there is really no Indian sit-down restaurant in that strip. So it is going to be adding a very unique food to that. The other thing is that, I mean, I understand your concern about, you know, limiting liquor. I, I am also a parent of two daughters, and my elder one is almost, almost going to college. She is in 11th grade, and she wants to go to MSU too. So I will be very, very mindful of that as well. Yeah, I mean, that's primarily it from my side. Hassan.
I'm Hassan Baydoun with Decorah. I am a general contractor, and I'm very excited to be part of Sugata's project. I've done many Pizza Wallas's for them. I represent the franchise door. And I built one recently in Columbus, Ohio. But this is the first concept, I'm very excited about it, that has alcohol and it's a sit-down Pizza Wallace. And that's the first one that has a seating, a lot of seating, that serves alcohol and also has pizza and wings and like a, like a good atmosphere of sit-down in the family and gathering of friends. And I think it's going to be wonderful and awesome for not just here, for the concept to be carried on in all the states as well. And this Sugata was the first to adopt this big move from a regular pizza place to a sit-down restaurant. But the best thing about the whole franchise is the, the quality and also the taste of an Indian food and a pizza. And this combination that everybody loves, you know, we love pizza, but we love also Indian food. But now you can have it in a piece of bread and just bite on it. It's so unique. And not just for adults, also for kids and for family too as well. So I definitely support this, this concept. And I'm here for any question you guys have.
Thank you. Any questions? So looking at your menu online, it looks like you kind of have the traditional pizza options and then you have, you know, a separate part of the menu with Indian pizza options. Is the menu going to be pretty consistent at this restaurant than it is at your other locations?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I will probably add to that. It will be pretty consistent with that. In addition, we will be adding a few pasta dishes. But like as far as pizza is considered, it would be.
Okay, and then the patio, is that going to be?
Answering that patio, the patio, it's pretty deep away from, I think it's about 20 feet at least. And also, it's required by code to fence it all the way around, and it's a secret fence and ground, so people can just, you know, grab the beer and walk. And the minute you walk out of the table, you just lost your seating area. You can't just walk out and then come back and sit. It has to go through the restaurant itself. So there's a way where they have to check in the restaurant before they go sit outside. And they can't just walk from the street to sit in the patio. They have to actually come from the back door, check in, and then be seated in the patio. And most likely, the patio has to be like reserved or has to be like requested ahead of time. So you'll be sitting out there.
So to clarify, is there, is there an entrance to the patio from Grand River or only through the?
I don't think there's an entrance, but there's an exit. It has to be just at least a three-feet exit, like an emergency exit kind of, with a little bit of push, you know, in case something happened, they have to run, you know.
Okay, and then is the patio, I imagine it's seasonal. Is it, can you take it down?
Yes, it's, it's, yeah, portable.
Okay, and then judging by the pictures, it looks like it's a, it's a full liquor license, right? So it's liquor, wine, beer, okay. That's all the questions I have. Thanks for the, is there any other questions before we let the applicant go?
Are we gonna, we're just gonna have a public hearing tonight, not vote tonight?
Unless there's a motion to take it up. I'm not inclined to take it personally, but.
I just, I think Lawrence's comment down there about 2:00 in the morning and having it out near Grand River sort of kind of caught my attention. I didn't really think about that, but I appreciate your comment about the fencing. And that makes sense. We've seen that elsewhere. Do we have any idea about Peanut Barrel? When do they close their court outside?
I don't know if they close their patio outside at 11, but they close at 11 according to their website.
Alcohol sales? Close at 11?
Yep, that's what they're, that's what my friend Google says.
Okay, so we might want to consider making that consistent with Peanut Barrel, your neighbor, when we, when we vote next week, so.
Yeah, I think my concern is, I think we can have the best intentions, but the proximity to Grand River concerns me. To have drinking outside at least until 2, I think is asking for trouble.
I think, you got my attention, so.
There could be a motion to revise the item at the next meeting, but I think the, yeah, the point's clear.
Most of, most of the time, outdoor seating, most of the time, most of restaurants, they close it at certain time, like 11, 12, they stop seating people outside at all completely.
Just to understand your concern, are you concerned about the patio hours?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not concerned about the.
We have no problem with that, absolutely. We most likely stop seating people outside after 11 o'clock.
Yeah, I'm not concerned at the 2 o'clock on the inside. I'm mostly concerned about drinking.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. That's definitely.
Yeah, and what I'm hearing is, you know, consistency with the neighborhood restaurant for the patio.
I sound like I'm not fun, but.
We all know you're fun. All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? And then, yeah, like for Commissioner Denal's point, who's not here, I think, yeah, she said basically, we had a conversation at the last meeting about the importance of keeping the two-hearing process. And so our process is we do the public hearing and then we vote on it the next time to give you an opportunity to answer any questions in the interim or for the public to ask questions in the interim. So just to answer your question. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate the background. I had two other cards up here. I wasn't sure if they were with you or if they were public.
I'm Carson Patton. I'm the Vice President and Retail Advisor of Martin Commercial Properties. I helped Sugata and Prigati find the space. And I'm here to express my support for Pizza Wallas' request for alcohol service in general, which I feel is an essential step in securing the success of their exciting new business to the city. East Lansing is home to a diverse and vibrant community. And Pizza Wallas aims to reflect that by offering a unique Indian twist to pizza, as you guys have learned about, that caters to a wide range of tastes and backgrounds. Sugata and Prigati are local to mid-Michigan and are passionate about creating a welcoming space where residents, students, and visitors alike can enjoy bold flavors and rich culinary traditions. A liquor license will allow them to provide a complete dining experience, keeping customers in East Lansing and drawing more business to the city in general. And wanted to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate the background. Jeff, are you with the applicant or are you?
Yeah.
You are, okay, thank you.
Hi, Jeff Haran, representing Phipps, Haran and Haran, the landlords there at Grand Plaza. I'm here obviously in support of the Pizza Walla. And it's a, it's a big space. It's like 4,100 square foot space, very hard to fill. Most of the tenants we see are, you know, 2,200, 2,000 square foot space. And they're making a major investment in the city. I mean, if you can look at the renderings, it's going to be beautiful. And I just, the amount, the time and the effort and the major investment they're making, I hope you would support this.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions, at this point, we'll open the public hearing for any members of the public to come forward to address this agenda item. Is there anyone? Oh, sorry, councilman?
Yeah, I just want to suggest that you take a look at the, the conditions that have been placed on the other restaurants in that block in particular. The conditions that were identified in the proposed motion are very brief. And there are other conditions that you may want to consider. So I'm just suggesting, when it comes back to you, that those are also provided.
Thank you for the recommendation. I think that's good. And hopefully, we have some friends on city staff that could help us with that. Love to look at that before the next meeting.
I think Grace got the message, is that right? Yes, you did.
I think she did.
And I don't want you to feel like I was trying to pressure you to vote. I just wanted you to have something if you felt like you wanted to.
Understood. Appreciate the, it's always good when the motions there in case we need it if there's extenuating circumstances. All right, seeing as no one wants to come forward, is there anyone online in the queue that's ready to?
There's no one on the queue.
All right, at this point, we will close the public hearing. We will see this item presumably at the next Planning Commission meeting, which is, was it March? March 26th. Thank you so much. All right, that takes us on to item 6.2, a request from Matt Levitt on behalf of Meyer, Inc. for approval of a special use permit located at 100 West Lake Lansing Road. The applicant request is to construct a 5,751 square foot gas station with six gas pumps, islands, and 12 pumps. The property is owned B2 Retail Sales Business District. Ms. Wrighton, I think this is you, right?
Yes, Ms. Wrighton, planning department. The Meyer gas station is proposed at the north-east corner of Abbott Road and West Lake Lansing. Sorry, I don't have my glasses, so bear with me. Yeah. Oh, so much better. There we go. Okay, I can see. There's one customer entrance exit with products for outdoor displays, flanking the entrance as well as propane and ice cabinets. The signage appears to meet the ordinance. There's sufficient parking and drive lanes being provided. There's two EV stations, a bike station for three bikes. Proposed relocation of a bus stop on West Lake Lansing has been tentatively considered for approval by CADA, but the proposed that's on the plan on Abbott Road has not been approved. The relocation of the stop that's on Lake Lansing would include an ADA walkway as part of the move. There are invasive knotweed, which exists on the site, which will need to be removed following state guidelines for removal and disposal. A traffic study was conducted. Generally, gas stations are not destinations such as a retail or restaurant, so it's not anticipated that the volume of traffic on Abbott or Lake Lansing Road would be substantially increased. There is one tree species that is listed as a non-approved tree, which is a Japanese lilac, but there's another list that says it is approved. So we're going to have to work with DPW for their street trees to find out which is the accurate one. Just wanted to bring a couple of other things to point. There's proposed box elder and cottonwood trees, which are generally not favorable species because of their, they're kind of messy and bring bugs, but they're not prohibited. There are two stormwater detention systems which are proposed, and the customer will have to, they are working with a maintained onsite system and will work with DPW for items related to that. We do need to have the walk window that's proposed identified for its location, which is for the service in the evenings because the store is closed from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Mechanical units will need to be screened. The minimum planting requirements appear to be met. However, we do recommend that native plantings be used and in alignment with the city's strategic goal number seven, to be responsible stewards of the environment by reducing or eliminating reliance on carbon and reducing activities adversely impact climate change. Item number three of that strategic goal is to incorporate increased attention to invasive species management and repopulating lands with native pollinator-friendly plants while updating the fiber park plan. The only other thing that I would like to add is, which I have already mentioned to the applicant, that the station is very plain. It is not complementing the surroundings. The ordinance does say that the proposed size, height, architectural character, and placement shall be reasonably compatible with existing or anticipated buildings. And this is generally a standard Meyer gas station that you can find anywhere and not necessarily know that it's in Michigan. So any questions? And the applicant is here. Thank you, Mark.
Questions for Ms. Wrighton? Commissioner Putz?
Yeah, I noticed that, so there is a request for an exemption for the public arts. I may have misread that, but it was an exemption, normally there's some sort of public art that is required for a new structure.
So they'll pay a fee in lieu of that?
Okay. I noticed the reason for the exemption was because they didn't have a place to display public art, but also, as you noticed, they have, you know, four exterior walls that are just painted gray. Have they considered, you know, maybe looking at a mural or some other, something that would make it a little bit more?
That hasn't been discussed. The art component goes through the Art Commission.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good question for the applicant.
I'm curious, just, I need you to educate me on the, because I haven't seen this before. On page 105, there's a comment about the bus route and the applicant wanting to relocate the shelter and CADA not being okay with that.
Correct.
How do we navigate that?
So I reached out to CADA. I had given the applicant's contact information and they had made contact, but we hadn't gotten an answer, so I reached out to them and furthered the conversation. And then, and Jim is here and he can further explain, but it was my understanding that it would be too close to relocate that to the intersection. And so CADA said, no, thank you. And there was an email communication.
So we would keep?
So where it's at now on Abbott will stay.
We'll keep it there. It won't move.
Right, so what's on the plan is going to be stricken at the next revision.
Thank you. That helps.
This does not trigger the ordinance requirement for electric vehicle charging stations, right?
No, but they're providing two.
They're providing two? Okay, that was going to be my next question. And then, so to your talking point about how the facade and overall look of the building doesn't blend in with neighborhood character there, could you provide an example of just a couple modifications that would help them achieve that outcome?
Well, to the east, there's a, it's a brick building, and it's all a darker brick that kind of blends in with, it looks like you're in a more rural setting. I know we're the city of East Lansing, but you're building on a vacant site that is populated with trees, which are green and brown, and their standard colors are beige, red, and blue, which I take as a contrast to the surrounding. And I think actually, there's a dentist office to the west that's also a brick, darker brick facade that kind of blends in. I've driven by it several times before. I've actually seen it because it blends in with the surroundings.
So we don't need to add that as a condition, though? That's already a requirement for?
It's stated in the ordinance that it shall be, and whether or not you determine it is, is up to the Planning Commission.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for you. Is there any questions for city staff?
This might be a question for the applicant. I'm not sure. Thank you. Has there been any conversation with the apartment complex that's basically like right behind where this is being proposed to be built?
I haven't had any. They would have to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think at this point, we're ready, ready for the applicant. I have a handful of cards up here. It looks like most are all up on the applicant, so I, I'll let you folks determine what order you want to present.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Matt Levitt. I am the real estate manager for Meyer. I'm based out of Grand Rapids, 2929 Walker Avenue Northwest. Happy to stand here in front of you tonight. We are looking to propose a new gas station at the corner of Lake Lansing and Abbott. The store to the west on Lake Lansing does not currently have a gas station. So this was actually brought to our attention by local landowners as an opportunity to pursue a fuel station in the city of East Lansing that we frankly have been looking for for a while. But this presented a better opportunity than additional development at our current store. So that's what we've proposed here. I understand, I've read through the report. Tonight with me is Jim Rosma from Colliers Engineering, who's a civil design consultant for this project. Between he and I, we can probably answer any questions that you have. I'm happy to take those questions. If they're more specific, I'll probably defer to Jim, but from the business side of things with Meyer, that would be my area.
Commissioner Chavon, did you, did I say you?
No, no, it was a head scratch, actually. I'm sorry.
You sure?
I'm sure it was a head scratch. It was. It appeared that way and I knew I was in trouble.
Any questions? I just thought of, out of my peripheral vision. Any questions down here?
Commissioner Putz? As I asked staff, you know, the. So I, as I asked staff, you know, the exemption on public arts for this, have you guys considered looking at maybe doing a mural on the sides of the building or even painting the proposed canopy over the gas stations?
So we have not, mostly because that would be inconsistent with our branding across the fleet. We have done murals only in very specific instances at what we call market stores. There's one in Lansing, has a mural attached to it, Detroit, Roy Look, but that is specific to that fleet of stores that are specific grocery stores. It would be inconsistent with our gas station offerings. We decided, sort of as a company, we've had this conversation elsewhere, that a contribution in lieu of the public art made more sense for us as a company overall. We're happy to support. That is not a question whether we would make that contribution or not. We're happy to support that. It's just for our branding purposes, it wouldn't make sense for us to, to do a mural here where we haven't done that at other gas stations elsewhere.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a few questions, but is there any questions from Commissioners? Ms. Paine, thank you.
But it's already been shared. I'm just curious, this might be self-explanatory, but the question about this looking kind of cookie cutter and not necessarily like meshing with the area, is that in alignment? I'm assuming with your branding guidelines, is this how they, most of your gas stations usually look? Is there any flexibility in that?
Yes. So we, we have obviously a national brand standard or Midwest brand standard that, that we use as our launching point for every project. What you're seeing is that standard. It would be what you would see in a gas station in Grand Rapids or Cleveland or Columbus, wherever we're building currently. So that is the standard. So do we have opportunities to maybe soften it with some additional windows, lower level landscaping, things like that can certainly be a discussion. We would prefer, obviously, to keep the brand standard what it is, utilize the color scheme that we have, and, and generally keep the prototype standard, though there are certainly, I don't know if I'd say upgrades or alterations that we can make if those feel like they would make it more attractive to the area of East Lansing.
Okay. Thank you.
How typical is it to have a gas station this far away from a grocery store?
It's not. It isn't. It, it's fairly new for us. We typically have it attached to a supercenter or a grocery store. We're rolling out grocery stores in Metro Detroit. They're usually on the same property. That opportunity was not afforded to us at the store on Lake Lansing. Historically, we have attempted, we've had conversations with the municipality there. I believe that's the township to the north. They have not been interested in a fuel station there, so we have been unable to do that. The reason that this became an option, one was the availability of the property, but also, we are rolling out a program in Michigan currently that has fuel stations that are separated from a supercenter or another store itself. We're working on one in Kentwood, which is on the south side of Grand Rapids, near the airport. There's news, we just started construction or demolition a couple of weeks ago on a site in Grand Rapids itself, that will have additional, it'll be a gas station that's apart from the supercenter, it's across the street, but it is a program that we're kind of launching. This is one of the first locations where it would be separate from that supercenter.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful background. You have two electric vehicle stations potentially. Is there any option to add more as gas is, you know, hypothetically phased out in the next fifty years?
Sure. There's always the option to add more. Right now, it's a function of parking requirements. We've proposed two on the side of the building. It's sort of one of those things that, it's cost prohibitive to go to level three charging. I used to be in charge of, of charging rollout for the company, so I know a little bit more than sometimes my colleagues might, but as it relates to level three is sort of cost prohibitive, and the question of how long do you want to spend at a gas station? So these are level two chargers that, you know, if you need fifteen miles to get home and have thirty or forty minutes that you can do that, and you're kind of in a bind, that would offer this opportunity. We wouldn't go to the higher charging. That, that has some electrical demands that we're not prepared to meet on a one and a half acre site, including a new transformer and things like that. But it is a, it's a, it's an offering that we like to make as we look towards the future, and, you know, if people are in a bind and need to find that charger just to make it home or to make it to the next charging station, we'd like to be able to offer that service at the gas station as well.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I think, well, I know there was a application that came through Planning Commission about a year or so ago for another gas station, and I think they, they referenced that they had put technology in their pumps that would allow them to be converted to a vehicle charging station down the line. I didn't know if you had similar technology. That was kind of what I was getting at with my question.
Sorry, we, we don't leverage anything like that that I'm aware of. I think that's probably a capital construction project that would, I don't know how a pump, gas pump would necessarily be turned into an electric. I've never heard of that, so I can't really speak to it.
I understand, and I expect your business model is, as you, as you describe, where people are coming in and out very quickly, and they're not leaving their vehicles for that long, so. Okay, the only other question I had is about the branding and the fit for the area. I guess you did describe a little bit how you are willing to make some modifications to things like windows and, and the landscape that's there, so I guess I would just encourage you to continue having those, those conversations with city staff.
Yeah, and we're.
Because I think that would be important at this level and probably the council level as well.
Certainly open to having those conversations. We'd like some, some feedback in the sense of what, what we would like to see, what the city would like to see would be helpful, to hear that feedback either from the commission or, or staff or the council. It's sort of hard in a vacuum to just make those alterations. I'd rather, you know, be offer, not necessarily offered options, but, you know, what is it that you would like to see, not just what, what don't we care for?
Understood.
I think that's helpful.
Ms. Reiten, did you have something you'd like to add?
We can show examples, but just simply making the facade more brown as opposed to the bright beige, that'll then complement the character of that, that actual site and the neighboring sites, and, or making it brick-like. So when you have this, I understand your branding, so you're not, not to lose the branding, but to recognize that this is central Michigan as opposed to Ohio or any other location. And the properties east and west have brick facades, and so you want to kind of complement what's going on there from even a color scheme. Like, we can't regulate the color, but to, it does specifically say in the ordinance that the architectural character placement, so, my glasses on again, reasonably compatible with existing or anticipated buildings. So looking at it from drive-by, oh, there's Meyer, or, oh, that's a Meyer, as opposed, so you'll still see it, but it's not going to be in your face where we've lost all of the character of that corner.
Okay, so we.
Darkening, maybe.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have conversations about incorporating characteristics of the quarter while maintaining our branding. We do want people to be able to drive by and say, oh, that is a Meyer. We, we recognize those elements.
Right, of course. You don't want to lose that branding, but at the same time, per the ordinance, it has to be complementary to the characteristics of the surroundings.
Understood.
And those two immediate sites.
Okay.
Are darker brick.
Just a quick question. Do you think there's any opportunity to introduce any windows to the eastern facade? I mean, the faces Abbott or Chandler. Right now, it's shown in the floor plan as a utility room, and I wonder if that's something that, where there could be some sort of transparency or even?
Spandrel glass.
Spandrel, I guess. It's a really blank facade, and I think that would, at least at this point, just sort of trying to match the character of the other buildings in the vicinity.
Sure, okay. Yeah, let's, we will certainly take that back and, and take a look at windows. We, we have used spandrel glass at other locations effectively. Obviously, we don't want, for security purposes, to be able to see directly into a back room and, and privacy purposes.
I think you'd explore spandrel or clear story or a combination.
Okay.
Introducing something to that facade.
That's helpful. Thank you. Sure.
I'm actually surprised. Do you want us to blend with Speedway? Is that what you want?
No, we do not want to blend.
I was expecting that question from you, you know?
We do not want to blend with Speedway.
Joking, joking.
I don't, I, no, there is certainly no offense to Speedway, but we want to make sure that our customers recognize that we're a Meyer.
Right across the street. The difference between Speedway and a Meyer.
Yes.
I understand.
That's good.
I'm sorry, Chair.
I didn't realize there was a gas station across the street.
Yes, right across the street, and a new one down the road. I mean, it's.
Oh, I'm just kidding. I was like, really? You're always on topic.
So is there a correlate between, I'm sorry, this probably isn't relevant, I saw that the, there's a demolition evacuation of the Okamas gas sta, the Okamas Meyer gas station is now, they're taking out the tanks, being leveled, shut down. Is there a correlate between that project and the project in front of us tonight?
There is not.
Okay.
That is age and increased maintenance, that we want to make sure that we're providing a, a fresh opportunity in Okamas.
Okay.
Those two projects are, are not linked at all.
All right. Don't be irrelevant for us.
All right. Seeing no additional questions or comments. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I had two other cards here. I wasn't sure if they were, I guess, three additional cards here.
Good evening. Jason Killday, Vice President of Development for Gillespie Group. We represent the owner, LLAB, kind of LLC. That's a complex one, Lake Lansing and Abbott. So we, we own that entity. We bought the property from the Martin family, which was Quality Dairy, two years ago, plus or minus. I think the Martin family was looking to do this very similar concept there. They've changed their business plan. They wanted to get rid of property to handle some estate taxes, things of that nature, so we were able to buy it. You know, certainly understand what we're saying about the architecture. I do think, you know, based on our research, this, you know, property is probably zoned pending a special use permit for this use. We have gotten several calls since we've gone under contract with Meyer for gas station use on this corner, so I, I think it's something that, you know, the users out there, you know, the people that provide the service see a need for, and we would hope that you would support this, and we're here to support Meyer through this project. We did the downtown Lansing Meyer with them. We talked about the Merrill early. Great company to work with, good community steward. I think we'd be lucky to have them make this investment in the City of East Lansing. So, thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
Jim Rosma with Colliers Engineering and Design. To Commissioner Lepine's question about the bus stop, I did speak with Dustin eventually, right? It just took a minute to connect with him, and their concerns about moving the bus stop close, closer to the intersection were, were really twofold. There are a lot of users in the apartment complex, and he was concerned about moving the bus stop further from their primary use, which I totally understand, and the proposed location, as convenient as it would have been to be near the front door of the convenience store, he felt was a bit of an obstruction to the traffic circulation into and out of the site, would create some clear vision constraints as people come in and out and have to dodge around or duck around the, the back end of that bus. So perfectly good explanation, and appreciated that. I have no concerns with that one as far as the, the location of the bus stop where we've proposed it, the sign on Lake Lansing. That is the, our preferred or my suggested location, but again, his same, his similar concern there was that somebody might swing around and then pull in front of the bus, so it's very likely that we'll take that sign and move it to the west side of the intersection after further conversation with them.
That description is really helpful to me. I lived in that apartment complex during grad school and, and very familiar with that corner and the number of people that do take that bus, so that description is helpful to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good commentary. Is there anybody else from the applicant? All right. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any members of the public that wish to step forward to address this agenda item? Okay.
Dr. Maxon. Dr. Greg Maxon, Maxon Dental PC. We're the property just to the west of the proposed site. Just some list of concerns. You know, when you have a property that's professional and you're expecting change, there's a lot to think through and get adjusted to. We go from seeing woods and deer every day to naturally, you know, gas station, and we already pick up a lot of litter from Speedway, so one of the things that's on my mind is whether we could tastefully place some sort of a barrier between the professional property to the west by practice and something that might be able to be maybe a berm with some hedgerow or something that might be able to kind of make it differentiate professional versus retail and a different level of activity. Second thing would be, in keeping with the facade conversation, you know, we're professional where we're at, across the street from us the same, and there's a lot of brick in that area, so I would, I would think that that would be a consideration, too. And then one other thought I have, and there's no hard data on it, it's just observation that when we pull out of our parking space and onto Lake Lansing Road, turning left is almost, it's highly difficult to do. Putting a bus stop there, it will make it more difficult, and then the congestion and just the activity there, I, I'm concerned about being able to make a left-hand turn out of our parking lot for our patients. So, things to think through. I, I would be interested to know more about why keeping a Meyer gas station with the Meyer superstore is so difficult. That, that tends to be their trend, and so I, I would want to know more about why that wasn't an option or a possibility, but, you know, not against development at all, just I think it's appropriate to ask the right questions so that it's going to be a change and an impact that could be different from what, what we have there already, so, thank you.
Could you fill out a card, please?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, thank you. Beat me to it. Appreciate your comments. That's, that's helpful. Anybody else from the public wish to come forward and address us?
Counselman? Let me just quickly respond to that. The Meridian Mall was originally proposed for the corner of Coolidge Road and Lake Lansing Road by the freeway there, and there was a vote in the city to deny the zoning change. Petition was filed, so ultimately, the Meyer store was approved there, but my memory anyway is that Myers, a gas station at that location was specifically prohibited in the conditions of approval for the Meyer store there. That's why this, I, I think they've asked in the past a couple of times to have that changed, and it was denied by city council. So we have this location that's being proposed at this point in time, but I think that answers your question as to why it's not at the superstore at this point in time, is because it has been denied a couple of times for a change and was prohibited by whatever council was in existence. I think it was like nineteen eighty-three or, or somewhere in that era.
Background I, I wasn't aware of, so thank you. Seeing is there no more, thank you. Seeing is there no more members of the, the public here to address this item? Is there anyone online in the queue?
No one in the queue.
Okay. Any additional direction for staff? Seeing none. Thank you, everyone, for your, for your comments. Insightful as we consider this at our next meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for March twenty-sixth, so, thank you. All right, that takes us on to tonight's final item, which is a public hearing to consider ordinance fifteen forty-three amendments intended to be corrections and clarifications to chapter fifty zoning and chapter thirty-two signs of the City of East Lansing's Code of Ordinances. Mr. Bartley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I can confirm that the next meeting will be March twenty-sixth. Not even tentative, it's, it's going to happen.
Unless, unless people are gone, you never know.
Let's, let's hope that we have quorum. So the, the last item here tonight is, as you mentioned, a, a public hearing for ordinance fifteen forty-three, which is intended to be clarifications and corrections to zoning ordinance. We've talked about these proposed changes for a couple of meetings, just because I was thrown a lot at you, and I, I guess I want to just reiterate that the intent here is not to make any policy changes. We've been noticing little issues here and there, inconsistencies, missing definitions or maybe in the wrong place, sections that were sort of hidden that we thought could make it clearer. So the intent here is to make the, the code clearer, the zoning ordinance, clearer for, for the casual observer and easier to administer for staff. for the casual observer and easier to administer for staff. So I'll just sort of mention, what I pulled up on the screen is, is the report, and I've only changed a few things since our previous discussions. What I'm proposing to do since our last discussion, there was a question about the definition of rooming house that was proposed to be added, I'm proposing to just take that out. Let's, we don't, we only refer to rooming house in one other place in the ordinance, we don't have any point that, anywhere that points to this is how a rooming house should be governed. So I think that, and I was concerned that introducing a new definition could, could essentially be saying, what is this rooming house? We noticed some, some potential conflicts between that and a class four license for rental housing license, so we're proposing to just take that out of the proposed definitions or amendments altogether. We propose to modify certain definitions. We have a reference to rooming house in the definition of classes of multiple dwellings. Again, it's not found elsewhere in the ordinance except for there and in the new definition, so we propose to take that out. There had been a question last, at the last meeting about the definition of major streets, since that included just streets near the East Village District. That had been just sort of a remnant of the definition of major streets being in that East Village section. We would propose to just remove the references to the major streets around East Village and just say, this is what's, in Chapter 32, the sign ordinance, which essentially refers to major streets as defined by the comprehensive plan. I also misspoke in the public, during the meeting, and just wanted to correct it and said that Grove is a major street and it's not. MAC is a major street, and that's what I was thinking of. So just in case anyone heard that or saw it online and went, hold on, that's, that's true. I'm proposing to change the reference of rumor, to, to remove that reference to rooming house. The rest of the definition of rumor still makes sense. I believe that was it from our last discussion of what I'm proposing to change. I guess with that, I want to open it to questions about anything in these 64 pages of Redline. I included the key, again, there had been some questions last time, what do the different colors mean, you know, double, double underline green, for example, means something's been moved to this point. If it's crossed out, it, it means it's been moved from that point. So we had some questions about that, but I'm happy to go through anything we've talked about in the last couple of meetings. If you have questions or comments or would like to move ahead with a recommendation to council.
First of all, thank you for making those corrections. I feel like I was, I was being a pain at the last meeting when I had like a dozen, dozen things I rattled off. It took me a bit to realize this really is, I should focus on just the, the technical changes and the restructuring, this is making not some of the, the policy things in it that I disagreed with and think we should maybe revisit at a later date, things like setbacks for, for decks and, you know, the mass timber language that was in here.
And I'm noticing just one more thing that I'm proposing to modify since last time, I'm sorry to interrupt. I had originally proposed to remove a restriction in the neo-traditional neighborhood redevelopment overly district. There's currently a restriction that says only up to 25% of the houses in, in this overly district can add an accessory dwelling unit, we'd propose to take that out. I still kind of feel like, well, I don't know, I, without sort of speculating on the intent, we, we just figured that would, that would sort of constitute a policy change if we were to remove that 25% restriction and wanted to stay away from that, so I propose to remove that amendment from that section. That, that's all the amendments, so, sorry to interrupt about that, just wanted to make that clear.
No, but to be clear, not because you disagreed with it, but because you wanted to, just to be technical updates and not policy changes?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other comments or questions? We spent a lot of time on this at the last meeting.
I just, I just want to again, thank you for a boatload of work on this. I've done this kind of work and I know that it can be mind-numbing but necessary, and thank you for your hard work, and thank you for your staff's hard work on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really just make these packets large, just to make them seem overwhelming and that we did a lot of work, so I appreciate that.
Well, it worked.
It worked.
And I feel bad because I had suggested this be a public hearing because I thought the room would be full of people here to acknowledge and comment on your work, but they left after the exciting stuff, so.
Maybe if we have policy changes proposed.
Yeah. Any other comments on this? Okay. I don't, I don't have it. I think I covered everything I wanted to cover at the last meeting.
I should mention, I didn't include a sample motion. The sample motion would be move to approve ordinance 1543 as proposed, essentially, or, excuse me, to recommend approval to council if you were to make, if you were inclined to approve tonight.
Well, we would have to, we still would have to open and close the public hearing now first.
Yes, you should.
So at this point, I'll open the, the public hearing, if anyone wants to come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone online in the queue?
There is no one in the queue.
Okay, at this point, we'll close the public hearing. What is the, the will of the commission?
Let's do it.
Is there a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion, but I've already forgotten what you said. I recommend approval of ordinance 1543. For recommendation to city council. Close? Does that work?
Is there a second? Moved by Commissioner Lapine?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Potts? Discussion?
It's pretty clear to me, I mean, pretty clear cut.
Yeah, I, I, you know, again, sorry for sidetracking us at the last meeting, I think this is narrowed down to just those, those structural, technical changes and deviated from policy, and I appreciate that, and hopefully those comments don't go to waste and we can take a closer look at some of those things at a later date, but I think it's appropriate to do that outside the scope of this, so I'm inclined to vote yes on this, so. Seeing no, Commissioner Chaiten?
I thought your, that the last meeting was terrific, so no apologies necessary. I thought that was really productive and helpful, and, yep, a little detailed, but I thought it was productive and helpful, so please.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. This item is on to council at a to-be-determined date. Okay, that takes us on to, seeing as we have no new business, that takes us on to number, item number nine, Commissioner Concerns. Is there any concerns from commissioners?
Just want to remind the group I will not be at the next meeting, even though I said that at the last meeting and I'm here at this meeting, I won't be at the next meeting.
Okay, understood. I, I, it's possible, and I may not be either, I'm returning from a conference, if I'm here, I'm driving directly from that conference to be here in time for this meeting, so.
And I want to apologize for being late, I'm not usually late. I was stuck in a, a meeting for my, with my dissertation chair, you can't really leave those, so I am sorry for being late.
Apology accepted.
Apology accepted, no, you can't leave those.
They're painful meetings.
Given if it's any comfort I also doesn't.
Okay, that makes me feel better. I still feel bad.
All right, seeing no additional Commissioner Concerns, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Overby.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lapine. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned at 8:47 PM.